All right, I would like to call up meeting in order and we'll start with Pearl Hall.
Eco.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Slaughter.
Here.
Stimson.
Here.
Stucky.
Here.
Here.
All right, we're not going to have a work session this evening. We've got some other stuff come up. Um, I need to approve the constant agenda from last meeting. Uh, second, follow his favor.
Okay.
All right. So we're going to start off with communications to the board of trustees, keeping in mind that this is not necessarily have to do with the upcoming public hearings with the two ordinances we're going to hear this evening. So if it's, I guess, not related to those, we'd love to have a public comment. If not, we'll have another public, have a period in the ordinance itself. If that makes sense to everybody. Do you have any public comments not pertaining to these ordinance as we're discussing this evening? All right. We are moving on to new business. So we're going to start with our short-term rental regulations. Um, we're going to start with this thing at the bottom.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, this has been an ordinance that's been even worked for a long time. There have been numerous discussions, mostly workshops, that have been applied or asked about what it is that we want to do, town wants to do with regard to short-term rentals, right? Short- term STRs. The major concern with STRs that all the boards have expressed is the fact that it's a different style of use of property than the single-family residence. And it operates much like a business, especially when it's a 24/7 type of STR and the owner is leasing it out consistently throughout the year to maximize the profit. That kind of activity has certain impacts which are antithetical to what the town already wants to see, which is very protective, maybe protecting the values and character of the single-family residences. And protecting the natural environment. So much of the ordinance is trying to focus upon the impacts caused by short-term rentals. Understanding that we by law don't have to allow STRs, we'll ban them completely, but the town has always had this position that there should be some reasonable option for STRs provided they don't, you know, that first thing comes. So more recently, this board identified revamping the STR ordinance as the highest, one of the highest priorities. I'm glad we're going to get it done by here. Hopefully. I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the major changes in this ordinance over the past ordinance for the way I manage STRs. Just to give a flavor, let's say, you've all read the ordinance up and down. You've had presentations on it in the past, so we're not getting the labor every single term. But the major changes in the ordinance are these. We have only ordinance thoughts to limit the number of STR licenses or STR licenses that could be held by what we call owners. An owner of the STR ordinance is the person listed in the county records as the record owner of the property. It can be an individual, it can be two individuals, oftentimes a husband and wife. It could be a corporation, it could be a family trust. So we identify that if you're listed as the owner in the records of a county, you can't hold another, those people who are listed as owners can't hold another license elsewhere in the town. They get that one license and they can't have other. We've also expanded the word term owner to include the beneficiaries of a family trust. Treat them as owners for purposes of holding an STR license. So if the Johnson Family Trust owns the property, Johnson Family Trust may have four, five, six or, you know, beneficiaries that the trust protects the property for. Those beneficiaries have to be identified in the application for the license, and those beneficiaries can't hold a license somewhere else in the town. As to corporations, we identify a corporation which can own, own it, own property, can, can hold an STR license, it can be listed as the owner. We've expanded the word owner to include individuals and other corporations that hold a 25% interest or larger in the corporations listed as the owner of the records. They also can't hold an STR license. So if you have 25% more ownership in that corporation that holds that property, you can't hold the license somewhere else. So in effect, what the ordinance tries to do is limit the number of licenses that we might have out there, the operating STRs. And we've done it through that, that approach. There was some stuff published out there in the last week that said we're trying to ban corporations from holding STR licenses. But that's not the case in this ordinance. Good, but it's not the case in this ordinance. The, uh, excuse me. We also have taken an approach with regard to occupancy, which changes a little bit over the last ordinance. Some of the problems that we've had, some of the larger numbers of complaints have been larger groups of people, I mean, STRs, parties, if you will. Gatherings of a significant numbers of people, and complaints come in on those gatherings. So this ordinance limits the occupancy. That can be occupancy with the presence of individuals on the property. And it does it in the following way. It identifies a period of time from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, nighttime hours, we won't call them. During that period of time, you are allowed to have the overnight occupancy, which is two persons per bedroom plus two people. So for an STR between 9:00 and 7:00, 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, you should not have more than the overnight occupancy, which is two bed, two per bedroom plus two people. You have more than that, you can violate the ordinance. During the more or less daytime hours, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, you're allowed to have the overnight occupancy number plus four. So if you have a two-bedroom home, at night, you have two-bedroom home, two people, two people, two extras, so six people can sleep in that facility, that, that residence. During the daytime hours, you could have six plus four more. So that's the largest gathering you can have as a property. That's a change from our last ordinance, which didn't regulate the number of people. We had a lot of people, had a lot of people. So that's a rather major change for the ordinance. We've also changed parking. In the past, parking was not something that we took a great deal of inching through. We oftentimes had overparked STRs, cars building out onto the right, right-of-way, parked on the property lines, parked on the natural vegetation areas of the property with a lot of tunity for parking. So the approach in this ordinance is that what's good for the entire community, which we currently have a regulation that where everybody can't have more than five cars parked outside the garage. That also applies to STRs. The maximum number of cars for an STR is five vehicles outside the garage. We've also gone further in the application requirement that you have to designate the area in which you can park these five cars, or if you would. And it has to be delineated by gravel or some means that's not the natural landscape of the property. It's really intended to be for parking. There's not parking on the grassy area of the property. See, that has to be identified by the applicant in their application. There's also a prohibition against parking on the rice highway, which is true for the entire town, for everybody. There's a prohibition with, with regard to an STR license holder working on a deal with somebody else nearby to park cars at their property. That's also prohibited. You're not going to be able to get 10 cars by parking five on your neighbor's property. It's just not going to work that way. We also have a part of the limitation of fires, which is an area of complaint with STR renters lighting outdoor wood fires and leaving, oftentimes leaving them unattended. So the regulation prohibits any kind of wood burning fire outside the building, anywhere. So the renters there, they can't have a, a wood burning fire. They can't have a fire table, which are those commercially available tables, something pretty large, in which they're operated by propane, by propane or by gas. And then in the center is the flame, the fire, and around it is the tabletop. You can have one of those and operate it as a renter. It has to be on a, it has to be in a deck or a hard surface patio, and it can't be closer than 25 feet to the edge of the property. That's another concern, people park these things too close out there, they use it at night and cause the impacts to the neighborhood. They can have that. They can also have a fireplace. If there's a fireplace that's legally built on the property by the owner, the renters can use that fireplace. So fires have been controlled in that way, it's within, within the ordinance. We also have a requirement in the ordinance, which is new, which I will all call accountability. That is that when I get a license, when I apply for the license, I have to identify a responsible agent in my application. That responsible agent, someone who will be available 24/7, 365, to respond to complaints by the town that we receive about the STR. And that responsible agent, 24/7, 365, has to respond within 60 minutes of, of contact. And that contact can be phone calls to the renters. It depends upon the activities taking place. But they also may require them to come out and physically visit the property within, within an hour. And that's a big change for this town. It's a, it's a step that's taken by larger communities and regulating STRs. They have, this is copied from some of the other communities that have a responsible agent approach. So this will be new for us. This will be a requirement that we have somebody on the horn to contact who may have problems with the STR. That, or those are the major things I want to touch upon that's in the ordinance because they're the ones that most, people are most concerned about. There's a bunch of other stuff in there, a lot of it's still the same in the old ordinance, just stated differently. But I'll stop there so that we can take public comment and see what people's issues are.
All right. So I would like open public comment, public hearing, public hearing. Any emotions about? All right. So I think we have probably a lot of people who would like to speak. Anyone would like to start? Yeah, come on.
So just a question, is there a grandfather period for people who own multiple properties and are short-term renting?
They won't take it back until 2021.
Yeah, I should probably touch upon that. The ordinance that, that seeks to limit owners to one license approaches it this way. If you have today, if you have in this year, multiple licenses for an STR, you're allowed to renew those licenses into 2026. In 2027, they only keep one. So it's kind of a grand, if you have one today, if you have three today in a city, and you want not to renew any of them, you can still get one new one in 2027, six. Okay, keep it to 2027. So that's kind of the grandfathering approach.
Okay. Does it seem, I mean, does it seem fair to take away licenses from people who purchase properties under the, you know, previous rules and have been owning and operating? To me, it just seems more fair that if somebody spent, you know, their hard-earned money to buy properties under the rules that were at hand at the time, that they shouldn't be punished and forced to essentially sell. If they've been operating, it seems more to me that it would be the town's responsibility to enforce the, you know, the rules, fire pit, parking, things like this. But that's just my two cents, I suppose.
Would like to come up?
Hi, I'm Barbara Edelman. I think the ordinance is great. You guys putting this together that quickly and it's really quite impressive, especially given so many things going on. So I'm not, I have nothing on the ordinance itself. I just think, and I think there's room, there's a lot of room and a lot more work to be done on how they're enforced. Because it just, as it should, leaves the town manager with discretion on when it reasonably thinks it's a complaint that gets to go ahead and take the next steps. And there's no place that there seems to be a way to decide whether something, even if someone is flagrant, what that would look like. And there's a lot of room. And the regulations, I assume, would maybe be getting written too, and those will follow in order for the people who have to work through them, like the police and the rest of the town. But on that note, I just would hope that it's, you know, it does seem to try to avoid people coming in and making me complain. You're going to get somebody's complaint all the time, and I'm sorry. From, it's overdue, you know, like, oh, in other words, complaining about things that they shouldn't be. But when there are actual violations, where's the record? And who has access to that record? Who has access to the complaint record to see whether the town manager has in fact taken action on some of these complaints and why they did not? You know, that's a different record than the ones that are acted upon that then go to the owner and they have to go through a process and an actual record. So that, that can still concerns me the most because I think there are a lot of laws in this land that we live in, and it's really just about how they're enforced. And I look forward to seeing the next step.
Thank you. Well, our team is close.
I'm not going to introduce myself first. At first, I want to thank you guys for the work that you're doing, seeing where this is. This is a tough issue. There's lots of stakeholders. We've got our full-time residents that may or may not be involved in short-term rental. Some of those, their livelihoods depend on it. There's second homeowners whose livelihoods may depend on it. There's the visitors to our community that we want to bring back. There's staying residential town, which is really at my heart. My name's Gordon Mannan. I've owned a second home in Blue River since 2010. I became a full-time resident in 2020. I am in favor of what you guys put forth today, and I'm going to say for the following reasons, some of which the, our town lawyer, thank you for helping out, has said. And in particular, the limitation of somebody kind of monopolizing licenses, whether it be a corporation or an individual. I think that's really positive for the community and a good balance when it comes to all these competing interests. I think increasing the registration fees is a wise thing to do to cover our expenses to monitor these programs. We hired an enforcement officer recently. I think it was necessary. It's expensive to run the program. We at least got to cover our costs on the program. At the current number of licenses with the rates, it looks like we'll cover that. And we do rely on this also for tax dollars, but that's over and above just running the program. So I think that that's also a positive in the changes. I think increasing fines are good. Hopefully that gets people to follow the rules and takes less work to enforce the program. Collectively, I see these changes as decreasing ultimately the demand by increasing the costs of having a short-term rental license in our community, which I think is good. Again, balancing our community as a residential community and the business, which by the way, is a privilege and I can empathize with you. But in the town law, it says these can be changed at any time. And I apologize that these may be changed and harm you. Whenever you make changes, some people are going to win, some are going to lose. You want to do the greatest good here. Nevertheless, I do think that there's one piece missing from the regulation, and that's placing a cap on the number of licenses issued and the density of those licenses in the various communities. To ultimately maintain the residential nature of our community, I think that you have to limit the number of licenses. I live in Timber Creek Estates. We have approximately 40% of our homes are short-term rental licenses. This should not be the predominant type of residence we have by regulation. Predominant to me is over 50%. I would not want to live in my community if greater than 50% of the homes are short-term rental licenses. So I think it's really important to limit those numbers ultimately to maintain the residential nature of the community. Now, in Summit County, the only locations that don't have a cap are Blue River and Dillon, to the best of my knowledge. And, and we've seen in recent times that changes in market conditions in society can increase demand for these licenses. We had the pandemic, we had Airbnb, um, uh, another one. You know, we have this resort that formed outside that changed the demand for these licenses. Something's going to happen in the future that's going to cause another increase in demand. Maybe another pandemic, maybe decreased interest rates, maybe people wanting to live out here because it's so great to live out here and the, the environment and, and climate. So it's going to happen, and I'm not, you know, panicking here, but at some point it's going to happen where there's a demand in Summit County for more licenses. If we're the only guy in town that has available licenses, they're coming into town. If you let these numbers get, become the predominant form of residential ownership, going back, like dialing that back down is going to be really hard. And I would believe that now is the time, or shortly in the future, to set a reasonable cap and a reasonable density. So my question to you guys, did the town's trustees consider placing a cap or a limit in the density of short-term rentals in the town of Blue River? If not, would you consider doing that in the near future? And if yes, why did you choose not to use that additional, um, uh, option? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're right on time. Paul Singer, I live on Lou Grous Trail, 45, 45 here, resident, full-time here in the county here. Kudos, kudos, kudos. You guys have got a top job here. You inherited a, a very difficult situation and working with Bob and Steve, you put this together really well. First thing is, and I know that before this is formally adopted, signed and put in the record, somebody's going to go through and look for type wares and whatnot. And I can help with that because I found it by the dozen. I did read it. And again, you did a great job. I, and I echo what Gordon just said. To me, I looked at this as 10, 15, 20 years ago, the horse got out of the farm. Somebody opened the gate. It wasn't you guys, it was just anybody. It's all of a sudden, you decide to rent out the back part of your house. Or you decide to rent out yours, and it just kind of snuck in from underneath, and the next thing we know, we've got short-term rentals. And the previous board did a great job putting a saddle and a bridle on the horse once it left, but the door was wide open. The horse is out there roaming around. There's no fence saying where this horse can go. You guys had put a better saddle and a better bridle on the horse and gave it some directions on where to stay put. Gordon just made a, a perfect example in the sense that that horse can still go wherever it wants. The way I interpret this is there is no limit on the number of short-term rentals in the town. The only limit I, is the number of owners that are out there. There's 900 plus or minus lots within the town of Blue River. Okay, so let's take, you know, 10% of that that are more than double, two owners on it. So conceivably, 800 short-term rental licenses could be issued. Commercial real estate. This then becomes a vacation rental community, much the same as a flat and condominium with, with units everywhere. So I would implore you to take what Gordon mentioned here and put some fences around where the, the horse is going to be riding. Get a handle on what percentage we should be allowing out there. Maybe it's by subdivision, maybe it's by, you know, divide a community into quadrants, get together with neighborhoods. And find out what that adequate percentage is to protect the values, going right back to the very, very beginning of, of your intent and purpose here. And that's to maintain the residential character of the town of Blue River and address the impacts of short-term rental. Not provide more opportunities for commercial uses within the town of Blue River, because the zoning does not allow that. Thank you.
Thank you for this.
I'm Doug O'Brien, Little Rock Ground Drive. I've been there since 93. I agree with what these two guys said as well. I'm not against short-term rentals because I rent short-term rentals when I travel. So my one thing is, question is, why do we do two plus two when environmental health does not do, they don't design septic systems in Summit County besides two per bedroom? They don't do the two per bedroom plus two. So I'm curious where that came up. I know it wasn't you guys that did it. It's been there forever, but I'm wondering why we don't go with environmental health. And then, um, that's mainly my concern. I do agree kind of with the cap. I, at one time, I don't like the word cap, but I think we're getting too many. And, you know, I mean, it's just Crown subdivision is loaded with short-term rental activity. And I don't mind when it's right next door to me, you can work with people, but, you know, it's not normal well, septic use. It's not normal what a four-bedroom house with eight people say in it would be using when you got like three-day rentals and cleaners coming in, hot tubs being changed out. And it just, um, maybe there's a lot more years. So that's my whole spiel. So thank you very much.
Mayor, if I can address, there is a provision in the new ordinance that authorizes the town to contact environmental health and other agencies too. To see if there's any limitations that, that they would recommend on the particular property. Gives this town the authority to lower the number of two plus two.
Right. And I'm curious about well, too. I mean, because when you get your well permit, it's not for them.
Yeah, so we can acquire it. We may end up, may, we may end up working up a, an arrangement with environmental help and others to, to refer these always to them.
Right.
And, and get their feedback.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else in here like to make public comment? Yeah, of course.
Good evening. I'd like to join the chorus of residents who are thanking you for your hard work over the past seven months. I know it's been a long process and, and mostly I want to thank you for listening, for listening to the community. And for those who were to come out and looked at the impacts of neighborhoods, very, very grateful for that as well. So thank you for doing that. Uh, to the gentleman's comment over here, I didn't get his name.
My name is Brady Stott.
Okay, you're in town here? Okay. Chris Bailey at Lake Shore Loop, if I hadn't said it right. Uh, to his, to his comment about, about why limit the licenses just to one owner. We have a syndicate in town, as you know, but I'll save it into the record, that has three houses in Lake Shore Loop, all in very close proximity to one another. And my wife and I are in the middle of them. That, the capacity for these three homes combined, at the current regulation is 34 people. 34 people can occupy those three homes. You add the, the additional plus four on to that for daytime use, it interrupts 46 people. 46 people is, is over four times the number of people that are sitting here to get work right now. That's a lot. Not only that, but they're being marketed together. So you go on one of their websites, one of their Airbnbs or wherever they listed them, and they say, oh, and if this isn't enough. Look at our sister and brother properties over here, and they're being marketed together, and we have seen family reunions and we have seen weddings occupying multiple houses that the syndicate owns. And there was a little pickup football game this past summer between two of those homes, and Ricky and I were at the 50-yard line for that. And again, these are resort homes. These are, these are not, people don't go, you know, those of us who have hot tubs, we go in the hot tubs to relax and have a spa moment. They go into a hot tub to have a party. Just last night at the one next to us, there was a big wheat party out there. A bunch of people sat out there, enjoyed the snow, smoked weed. If you're a neighbor, you're probably doing gummies inside. But because these things are go smoking, they're outside smoking. So again, I deeply appreciate the work you're doing. I also certainly am moving forward with a, with a cap at some point, but I'm very happy to take big steps along the way. Thank you again for listening and thank you for your advice.
Second thing is Chris. Is there anyone else? Of course.
Hi, I'm Laura Wardlaw. I'm a property at 81 Gray Squirrel, and I think I'm the first one that actually owns a short-term rental that's speaking tonight. And I totally appreciate you guys as neighbors because I believe in the golden rule, and it's, short-term rental has always been heavy on my heart to make sure that I'm doing it as others as I would want them to do and to meet the, I would to live next door. So I appreciate that you weren't as heavy-handed in a lot of resort communities that have been in the last few years, and that you still give me the ability to hold on to what is going to be my dream retirement home in the next three years. That we found a couple of years ago and love the community, but we do have to operate as a short-term rentals. We have to hold it while we live in Denver and be working downtown Denver for the next few years. Um, so my main question is, has anyone looked ahead at what the results might be as far as hitting this during the time that, and they just published that break rate was down 16 to 17% in revenue in this last year as compared to last year. In this last year as compared to last year. The Denver was published this year, this last week, sorry, my father passed in the last week. So I'm sorry that I have notes and I'm a little discombobulated, but this is important to me, so I wanted to be here tonight, so please have a little patience with me. But Denver was, there was an article this week that Denver has the highest inflation in the nation. And so a lot of the people that come to Breckenridge in Blue River has been reported as being front range people. That would come and stay the night versus taking airfare right now because it's expensive to travel and there's a little bit of a recession. And so I'm just wondering if anybody has looked at what the impact is going to be on the town revenue? Because the amount that Michelle mentioned at the last meeting that I watched online was like a million and a half revenue. That is two thousand per home that the short term rentals are possibly taking off of property taxes. I know our home year to date has generated twenty seven thousand dollars alone in taxes to the state and local tax community. And so just considering the timing of implementing a little bit more high fees that have to be passed on to the guests. Because I literally am breaking even the last two years just to pay a twelve thousand dollar mortgage. If you pay for a twenty five percent management company because I have to be able to answer twenty four seven to be a good neighbor. Our cleaners are eighteen percent of the fees, we are literally breaking even to just try to hold on to our dream retirement home right here. So I'm asking that you consider not making this per bedroom fee be immediate, seven times what we paid last year. In one year, if that could be phased in, if that could possibly be a one time fee versus the renewal being annual. Because it, I don't think it takes annually as much, I don't think you should be charging per bedroom. Because administratively, it's no different to give me a license, which is somebody else's license with two bedrooms. And those higher fees are going to be passed on to the guests, which I think will mean that they'll go find another location where they can. Or they'll just go back home because a lot of these people are day troopers from the from the front range and they won't spend their money here. And so I just feel like we have created an economy for local cleaners, for local handymen, for the hot tub people that come every guest, not just once a week. The trash people that come every guest, not just once a week. We try to be really good short terminal hosts and we're bringing a lot of revenue to the town. And so please consider making that fee either be one time fee, be phased in, and then also those penalties of like a three year penalty. If you own a short term rental, you know that if, we don't know until December. That we're not going to be able to renew, we've already had reservations into January, February, our peak season. If we cancel those reservations, we will be penalized thousands and thousands of dollars per reservation. So the penalty is already kind of baked in there for people to not violate your ordinance and not have to cancel those reservations. So to be heavy handed on the Blue River side of three years, you can't do, you can't put this property back on the market and and all of the additional fees. I just feel like that's a little heavy handed, so. Yeah, I think I made most of my, I felt like at this point, everybody's making money but us. Because the homeowners, the local community, the state local taxes, that all the revenue that's being brought into Breckenridge. And I just, with Blue River revenue, I don't know how it's going to be affected if people like this gentleman that have two or three or however many just sell them. And you may find out that you have to raise the property taxes by two thousand dollars a person to be able to get back to the revenue that the short terminals were generating. So just like you to consider the positive impact that short terminals have. And look ahead to the to the full impact of that.
Thank you.
Hello everyone, my name is Thomas Berry, I own Once Before Book, the next channel here in Blue River. Thank you again for everything you do, thank you to all my neighbors here. Appreciate everybody's position here and all the steps at all. What I'd like to speak to is just about responsible managing of your unit. There's, there's two sides, right? You've got, unfortunately, we hear something story, you know, I'm sorry to hear that that's happening around you, but it's not the way it should be here. And so we're all for self managed, my own home. And we're very, very hard to stay within the limits and to respect our neighbors, make sure that everybody is respected. My rights are respected, my neighbors' rights are respected. The interesting here that I didn't even know that we're allowed to have more than the occupancy here in a day. We don't have more than the occupancy ever, which I think is completely fair. And if you have three homes in the same neighborhood, they shouldn't all be able to go to one home for dinner. Right, like that's just, that's the way we follow the rules, we don't need to do that. So I'm just, I'm just asking you all to know that there are responsible property managers out there. We want to work with you, we want to follow the rules, we want to be respecting the community. And so I don't disagree with anything that you get saying here. I guess maybe some clarity on on the, maybe the, I don't know, I'm not too sure, I know enough about the three strike rule. But I appreciate the responsible agents, great program, they work really well in other communities, Keystone, Breckenridge, et cetera. Giving us that opportunity because as hard as I vet my guests, once in a blue moon, there's some people that just laugh, you know? And I, I don't like those people, I don't want them in my home, I don't want them in this community. If somebody lies to us and they do have more than fourteen people or whatever is allowed. I like giving us the opportunity, call, hey, there's too many cars, there's too many people. Within seconds, I will be there and I will refuse that instantly. So just give us that opportunity before, and giving us a strike without giving us the chance to resolve the situation. So I appreciate the opportunity to do that, responsible agent's a good thing. So I guess that's, that's my, my two cents, thank you for, you know, I'm all for reading out the bad PMs, you know, the big corporate entities that. They don't vet their guests, they don't really care about the community and the rules. I'm a homeowner here, I do care, there's small property managers in the community, we do care for everybody. So thank you for allowing us to all kind of work together. Thank you.
Thank you. There anyone else in here that would like to make a public comment? Or did you want to make a comment, I was waiting on, so we're gonna go for online public comment? So I guess if anyone would like to make a comment online, they can raise their hand. There's one. Oh. We got one hand raised. Barbara.
Barbara.
Barbara, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
So this is Ron Sisnowski. We have a short term rental in Timber Creek. We've had it since twenty nineteen, we've gone through four property managers trying to find one that could do a good job of vetting. Get renters in that were respectful of our property and our neighbors. And so as the previous gentleman just said, we're not all evil, people who own and rent SDR properties. The one thing that I would wonder if the board is considered seriously is if they do, if you do put a cap on the number of STRs. It will undoubtedly lower property values in Blue River. I, my Realtor put together some data on that several months ago, I distributed it among people in Timber Creek. And he compared it with a comparable community just to the north of Breckenridge. And the differences were highly significant, twenty percent, thirty percent, depending on the year. With that happens, well, it would happen if there's a cap, the housing values are going to go down. That means the property tax revenue will go down. And I wonder if the board has considered that and how they would make up that loss in revenue. As well as some loss in revenue from direct taxes and license fees for the STRs.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised? So I think we could go ahead and close public comment. All right. Does anyone on the board have any comments, concerns? For forty?
I think, you know, we've had a lot of thought into this, we've gone over it quite a bit. So in my, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the ordinance number twenty five dash oh nine repeal and re. Enacting Article One of Chapter Six, type of short term rental license in operation.
I say this. Gates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
It has to be unanimous because emergency ordinance, it's exposed, so let's make sure everybody's got their hand on the roll call. Good to get rid of it.
All right. So now we are going to talk budget.
Now we've got the item C, which is the approval, most of the regarding fee schedule.
Oh, sorry.
And then the same of that, I believe we discussed it, we've gone over it. So I will also make a motion to approve resolution number one twenty five dash fifteen. Approving a fee schedule for the administrative article one of chapter six, short term rental licensing and operation for twenty twenty six.
I'll second. All right. Is this an emergency ordinance as well?
No.
All right, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I believe. You can excuse myself, all right then.
Thanks.
Thank you, David Lechner.
I suppose our team may be a lot of love.
Thank you, thank you. There, he's the coach and they changed, they flexed practice today for something. So he has to go coach the kids. All right. Now we can talk budget.
Well, we had a budget workshop the other day and discussed the preliminary budget has been presented on October fifteenth. Try, we just run through all of the various funds to determine if they're ready to change. Board was definitely recommending. We had some discussion with regard to capital projects, but not really in a position to solidify a number for. A capital fund, which is usually paid for in already capital projects. One of the things was, what we discussed was that there was some things up in the air with regard to the broadband project. Because I haven't had a chance to meet with the vendor yet, which I did then the next day. I would say that the preliminary budget with regard to expenditures has changed very little. Two things will have changed and 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 that is that. The broadband project is moving forward, it's in its final stages, which they hope to complete the survey work before the end of this year. So I've given the go ahead based on a couple of things, and those are the changes that you'll see in the document. First, there was consideration for payment of this entire process. The survey work, et cetera, in the American Rescue Plan Funds. And when I went through with the consultant's final numbers, there obviously was not enough money to accomplish that based on what contract had been signed. I don't know why that mistake was made, but it was. And so, well, it's a good thing that by the end of this year, we'll have expended hopefully all of those American Rescue Funds. There wasn't enough then to accomplish everything we needed done, I think it was a hundred and two thousand dollars remaining work. And there just wasn't that there, but the good thing is, is that the board has been through the general fund supporting the creation of a broadband fund. Which would ultimately be where you pay for the project with the grant funds coming in, et cetera. So there was adequate funding in that budget through previous funding by the boards. You know, the budgets to be able to accomplish the entirety of that project, some of which will still end in two thousand twenty six. So those numbers have been changed only because of that extent. Excuse me. One of the other things that we talked about was, we did talk about capital projects, but the board really wasn't in a position to be able to say yea or nay to any projects in general. There was a plan that I alluded to that was done and updated two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, which has some good numbers in it. But there really wasn't identified a list of priorities for those project of the Spruce Creek Road, which was a lot of, which was accomplished this year. So what I did in the general fund was take the entirety of all those projects with the exception of the Spruce Creek Project. And I booked what that number would be and I put it as in the estimated two thousand twenty five as a reserve and committed to. And so that is a change, now that's not a budgetary line item, those monies would still have to be reappropriated back into the specific fund. If indeed went through with all those projects in two thousand twenty six, with possibly that occurring. The ability to be able to manage those projects, to get all the engineering done and stuff like that, it's going to be literally impossible. But at least you've got that earmarked to be able to accomplish the majority of those projects at some point in time in the future. Realizing that there'll be inflationary escalators, et cetera, as you go further on down the line. So that would be if you were paying attention to what the preliminary budget was, that would be one change. But it's a positive change because you're not obligated to utilize those funds. And in that, there's other things that occur, but there is a bookmark for those project funds if they, if the board decides they want to do those projects in the future. The other two changes were obviously, we discussed this, was that the taper reserve calculation was incorrect in reserve fund balances. I should note that the taper does not require you to necessarily bank cash, you can bank assets if you want, et cetera. But I've always felt very positively and most of the auditors I've dealt with speak the same way. That despite those, you have that cash available for emergencies if this was necessary. And then I put a little more thought into the contingency, well, I think you were slagging a number of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's not necessarily a representative in my mind what that contingency would be using for. Again, this is not a budgetary, budgetary line item, it's a reserve line item, which you've established that there's a useful appliance that you have available at the end of the day of your budget. So I went back and I said, okay, what would be emergency, because you're not going to be breaking down a water plant or things like that. That you see traditionally in other full service communities, but there are some considerations. And I think we saw that during the pandemic, and that is, is there a temporary, and I think you lived in somewhat, is there a temporary? Because of the pandemic, is there a temporary reduction in sales tax or lodging taxes or things that you're going to receive because you can't operate short term rentals? Or is there an inability because of some, something happens that they're not able to collect property taxes and then at the time of the bill, fashion? So I just put a contingency reserve of fifty percent, which is now included in both two thousand five, twenty five and two thousand twenty six. But the remainder of the budget, other than the fact that you wanted to carry over costs, even though you don't have anything specific, you had the cost management trust fund, I did pull those numbers forward. Other than that, this is what you guys pretty well looked at the other day. So I would suggest that we are ready to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen.
Anyone else have any questions on what Steve just pointed out?
What? You do have to open up a public comment.
Oh.
Public comment first then.
Yeah, all right. I would like to open public comment on the budget. Does anyone have any public comments, anyone else? I guess same thing with online, if you have a comment, could you please raise your hand? All right. Well, I would like to close the public comment then.
Uh, any comments from the board? Bend it, bend it, it's all you.
I'm making a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen. Summarizing expenditures, revenues for each fund and adoption of a budget for the town of Blue River for the year twenty twenty six.
I second. All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. You look good.
So that was the papers, the next part is a legal requirement. Well, you approve the budget, you have to, according to budget law, appropriate funds back specifically to the funds. And that has been included in resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen.
Do we have to open something up a comment? All right.
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-17, appropriating sums to money to various funds and the agencies in the amount and for the purposes set forth in Town of Blue River for 2026 budget year.
I second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The last piece of the puzzle is establishing the mill levy for the upcoming year for taxes that are collected from 2025. Once we're done with them. Uh, anyway, so this, these numbers are based on the August 25th legal supplemental from the county assessor's office of where the assessed evaluation stood at that point in time. The assessor's office has until, I believe, the 30th to update those numbers and then provide them to, uh, the town by December 10th. But the bill, the bill levy has to be, um, given to the county by December 15th. It's why we're doing budget right now. So the other complicated thing is that the town can't take advantage of the full amount of property tax that it could get with its approved bill levy because of the 5.5% limitation on increases in property tax. You face this almost every year, uh, going, and it's probably not going to change in the near future. I think you had a question on about it. Tried to get accepted from that, but it didn't pass. So the state has provided us a dark line of cap for the state. Thankfully the number matched fine exactly. Anyway, the state tells you, they tell all the communities how it's at the rates, which is in for, uh, 2026 is $930,584. Uh, that would be based on a 2.29 mill levy that is approved with a discount of 1.8313 mils. Okay. Takes us down to that number. So you can approve that. The one caveat that you need to be aware of is a sentence that Michelle put in there. I'm glad she did because sometimes we've had the change to the thousandth decimal point in the last minute. And it's not consistent with revolution. But you'll notice that section two allows us, once we get that December, December, December 10th assessment, uh, we can, I can modify that a little bit, that final document for those two. But still staying within the fact that we can't make more than 930. Well, the change basically is how much we have to temporary bill deduction. Cause I wouldn't assume that the assessor would, it would just increase based on the bill payments that have occurred between August and November. Anyway, there's no questions that I've ever, that we will, resolution 2025-18.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2025-18. Uh, let me general property taxes for year 2025, for the cost of government in Town of Blue River, which is this budget year.
I'm second to that. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
We're on to reports. You got anything for us then?
Uh, the wild card council will meet Thursday. Uh, the purpose of the meeting is primarily the approval of grant submissions. Uh, we're doing that twice a year now. So we did it this spring and now we're doing it again. And that's my report. That concludes my report. We'll meet Thursday. We'll give away some money.
I like it.
Uh, I do have a question. Uh, is there anyone, Ted Pilling used to do transportation. Is there anyone covering down on that? That's due to be, right?
Yes, sir.
So it was brought to my attention recently that there's no Blue River commuter loop anymore. All the buses that go through Blue River originate in Fairplay now. I don't ride the bus, but it was brought to me as a concern. And I don't know when they've met lately or anything like that, but, uh, any way we can get the Blue River commuter loop that starts and terminates in Breckenridge and turns around out here at Quandary reinstated?
It was a ridership issue. Our numbers have gone way down and that's why I believe it was taken away. I have not attended the meeting in several months. I've been focused on a couple of other issues.
Well, I, I would offer my, uh, ability or willingness to pick up slack for it to be.
I would, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I, I just need to know when meetings are and everything like that. So you can get with me offline and.
If you guys can point at that, that'd be fantastic.
Okay.
Uh, Bob, do we have anything from Town of Paris?
I have a comment. Back to the short-term rental.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the things that the staff is, is pressured with is the applications of the year, very small windows having to do with each amount of time. We, yeah, as I told you, Paul, along the process, the ordinance can be changed at any time. So we might want to think about perhaps, um, an early application date and a reduced fee for those group applications. It would lighten up the staff stress. So say it's September, we can get applications in, give a reduced fee for the application at that time. It might be something that we want to consider.
I'm not opposed to that at all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to make these guys life a little bit easier. They do a lot.
Everybody wants to come into the next couple of weeks because John and I don't have much air left.
Yeah. No, of course. I think anything we can do to take the pressure off you guys, especially in our current environment.
And also we'd give them some confidence if they get their application in, this is September, knowing that they've got rentals.
Really, they come here, pretty, they're calling it, whatever, now.
Yes.
Big time.
So I'll bring forward how it would change the resolution.
Perfect.
You guys can see it.
I would be, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
I think we got you, actually.
You got me. I got two things. Uh, first of all, I think I probably mentioned to you these couple of you that we're going to participate along with majority of municipalities in Summit County, along with Breckenridge to have our ballots counted through machines and not doing hand count. I think that was arranged by Michelle before I had arrived here, the budget that represented that was done. I think there's some, especially given this situation that we're in right now with an April election. Person that you probably have running in the election is not going to be here. Uh, but that seems to be the most logical way rather than trying to come up with judges and all this stuff. So the Town of Breckenridge has proposed to contract with Clear Ballot, um, for those accounting machines. There is some real disinterest in using the business. They have recently sold, there's a block that they can't be trusted. And that's just not on the federal level, but on the local. So the Breckenridge, you know, they have decided to move forward with utilizing the ballot counts. Uh, Breck is going to do the master contract with, um, Clear Ballot and pay for that. But there's a portion of that cost for operating the leasing machines, et cetera, that will be borne by whoever does that. And so they're proposing an end of governmental agreement. There's also participation agreement. But we have to, as a town, enter into all this so that Breckenridge can get their stuff back to Clear Ballot, line them up by the end of the year. And I won't have time, truthfully, between now and the next meeting to be able to bring that IGA to you. And so what I'm asking is if it's okay for me to go ahead and signify the towns and sign the agreements that are necessary and bring them back to you and have you, you know, attest to whatever it was. Just so you have information, so that you understand this is a big chunk of money. This is $2,000. It's really not that much. Now that would be $2,000 regardless of whether we have an election. If we don't have adequate candidates and we cancel election, we still pay because they're still, you know, they're still making preparations for our participation as they are with all of you. So I don't want to hide from that. But I just, they're really wanting us to turn this back around. In fact, I got from the town clerk from Breckenridge that just got me the old proposed language for those agreements. They, it, it's going to be a quick turnaround. It's going to be a turnaround that has to happen before the next board meeting. But I didn't want to proceed, uh, well, acknowledging that this is going to occur. I don't need a motion. You can take care of that.
Tom, beautiful. I think it's Tom, beautiful, man.
Okay. Other than my task list, I did want to, uh, share a positive update with regard to town manager search process. Uh, to date, I've received 16 inquiries, uh, with regard to the position. And so far, although I expect a number of applicants to come forward between now and Friday, uh, we've had four. So it's, it's very possible to leave, but maybe come again. So we'll find out more after five o'clock on Friday.
Thank you for taking time to do that, Steve.
Well, I have a best interest because they don't hire us.
You gotta go back to your time. Is that all we got?
Gee, yes.
Gee, we got anything for you, Rob?
Nothing off the top of my head. We're happy. Uh, the new body cameras came in today. So, uh, we'll start playing with those new toys. Yeah, we're good. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let me adjourn the meeting before we go into the executive session. Executive session first, all right. Um, shall I move pursuant to section 24 dash 4 dash 4024B of Carter advised statutes? Executive session will be called to receive legal advice concerning questions on the legal requirements, obligations for rewarding and compensating employees for unused vacation time and paid time off. No action is anticipated following this executive session.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you guys showing up. Thank you.
Do we have a second here?
Oh, a second.
Here.
Turn on his port. My dad was a couple. All of a sudden, right? Oh, I'm saying hi.
Wow. Can we take a five minute break, please?
And then do the other one.
I'll do one more. And then we can take a five minutes. All right. Move the whole executive session, part of the CRS 246 dash 4024B. For the purpose of receiving legal advice and answers to legal questions concerning an offer, can transfer real property to the town. No action is anticipated following this executive session. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Who's the second?